And we will, at this time, go straight into our work session. First order of business on the work session will be to see if any commissioner would like to discuss any preliminary items for the next board meeting, which... All right, hearing none, we will go to our discussion items. Item number one will not be discussed, that's the update on camera, the camera pilot program. We will not have that this afternoon. Next will be Ohio River South legislative update.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Howard Franklin, back to present to you post the Georgia General Assembly. I've got with me a couple of members of the Peachtree Government Relations Team, and I think, I think we initially scheduled our, we assumed our, our ability to present would be around six, so I think we have one or two others who will likely be rushing in very quickly. But we do have a PowerPoint here that I will direct your attention to, and it's really a recap of this most recent Georgia General Assembly with a number of the legislative priorities that came forth from both leaders in the community as well as leaders on the dais from the county commission. So, next slide, please. As you all are very well aware, the Georgia General Assembly gavelled out on signee die March of 28th. It was an active session. We're going to go through a number of the bills that came through both chambers, but worth noting, the governor has 40 days from signee die to sign or to veto legislation. There might be a couple pieces of legislation here that warrant that additional attention. I believe the date or the deadline for that 40 days is May the 7th, so just worth noting here. Next slide, please. Worth, again, noting, there's been some changes in the Georgia General Assembly in terms of the Clayton County delegation. As always, we'll have Senator Gail Davenport as an incumbent who is seeking reelection, but we do have both an open seat and a new representative, or in this case, a new senator, just based on reapportionment and new lines being drawn. So largely, DeKalb County-based Senator Elena Parent has been drawn into a significant portion of Clayton County. I imagine she's been spending some time here and getting to know all of you, as well as other stakeholders throughout the, without the region or throughout the county. And then also, an open seat for Senator Valencia C., who I believe served 22 years in the August body. So again, just want to acknowledge that we'll have a little bit of challenge, a little bit of change, and we're also going to be changing in terms of the seniority and the makeup of the Clayton County delegation. Next slide, please. These are other members of the delegation. I think, as you can see here from the slide, there are some challengers, but we'll see what happens on May the 21st. Just want to acknowledge that we do have the, the potential for change anytime that we're, particularly when we're following reapportionment. Next slide, please. And other members of the delegation unopposed, so all these folks that you see the smiling faces of will be back in the 2025 Georgia General Assembly. I'm going to bring up PGR to talk a little bit about some of the budget stuff, and then we're going to probably ping pong back and forth on some of the bills of interest.
Yep, your staff's done a great job of working with us on the budget issues. Two items we wanted to bring up in particular are LMIG dollars. A lot of new money has come into the budget. As you know, the budget's really divided in two pieces. There's what they call the FY '24 amended budget, which covers January 1 of this year to June 30th of 2024, and the FY '25 budget, which begins July 1 of 2024 and ends June 30th of 2025. In both budgets, there was additional LMIG money. The important thing to note here is that the dollars available in the amended FY '24 budget, as we list here, the $212 million, the applicants, or the applications should start now, and I think your staff's been diligently working at applying for those dollars. Every single city and county is eligible for that money. Obviously, GDOT's looking for projects that can make impacts, they need something that's ready to go, shovel-ready, so I know you have lots of great projects you want to fund, and so your staff's working diligently to put in those projects. They must be designated before June 30th of this year. And then the additional LMIG money for FY '25, those dollars can be designated through June 30th of 2025. There is some additional money that came through HBDDH, and that's $35 million that can be set aside for domestic violence shelters that, as you see fit, you may make an application for those dollars.
Next slide. I'd let you take this one, too.
This was a bill that a lot of folks at ACCG and GMA wanted. It would allow you to increase the, the dollar amount for projects that wouldn't, that would be exempt from bidding. It actually passed last year and was vetoed by the governor. This year, the, the bill started making its way through its process for whatever reason, and many, many bills, it was a very unusual session, many bills did not get final passage. They were left on what they called the table at the end of day 40.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Just if we could pause for one quick second, because I know that the board members are fully understanding these acronyms, but it's important for those to understand that are listening out there, the Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, that is through the Georgia Department of Transportation, which allows for us to use those federal dollars, that state dollars of what we're talking about now, for our road projects. So what does that equate to for you, for us to get rid of more potholes?
Yep.
Please proceed.
House Bill 581 by Representative Shaw Blackman passed the House and Senate along with H.R. 1022. This is a very important bill for every county, city, and school board to think about. It's called the floating homestead. And what, the original iteration of this bill was very detrimental. GMA opposed it, ACCG was trying to make some changes to it, and most of the school boards associations opposed it as well, because it wasn't, it didn't have an opt-out option. In other words, whether you had a floating homestead or not, you were going to get one if the voters approved it, which they likely would in November of this year. House Bill 581, as passed, allows for an opt-out option. And if you are a city, and each city, each county, and each school board must individually have public hearings, it must have two public hearings, and then vote as a, as a group to opt out by March 15th of 2025. If you do not, the floating homestead will be imposed on the, the county. And what that effectively means is that for a homestead property in Clayton County, the property taxes may not, if your assessment goes up 100%, it doesn't matter, because your exemption will float, so that you will never pay more than 3% in property taxes year over year. And in some cases, it works great, in some communities that have a lot of industrial, a lot of commercial, it works fine, because they're relying on that base. But if you rely heavily on homesteaded properties for revenue, it could have a big effect on your budget, something you guys need to think about. And every city in Clayton County needs to make an individual decision on opting out of this. So it's a, it's an important bill, we'll see what happens, but I suspect that the measure will pass as a statewide constitutional amendment in November of this year. It's unlikely the voters would deny this, and so it's something we should start contemplating right away.
Would there be a specific time period that each government entity would have to meet in order for the opt-out, or is it just contiguous?
It just has to be prior to March 15th, and on March 15th, by March 15th, the County Commission needs to vote to either opt out or not vote at all, and then you'll be automatically opted in.
Out and in, okay.
Yep. Do you want to take H.R., the Saints bill or not?
No.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, one of the other issues that was a big topic for this legislative session was elections. What we kind of saw was throughout the session, the Senate in particular, kind of led on these changes and these policies, and in the 11th hour, what's called an omnibus bill, which is a bill that contains multiple provisions, multiple languages from other bills, were all put into one bill, so it ended up being a pretty sweeping piece of legislation around elections. But essentially, they're beginning an overhaul of the current election system, and this included removing tabulation by QR codes for ballots. So our current system has QR codes on your ballot, and it gets scanned for tabulation. This law, if it was to be signed by the governor, would essentially make it illegal for tabulation by QR code despite it staying on your ballot. They're looking at completely changing the system and putting upwards of $250 million from the state to bring these changes down to the county level. One of the provisions in this bill, though, that, that I think was positive, was brought forth by a DeKalb County legislator, and DeKalb County is running into some similar issues around vacancy in, in their county commission and not being able to set a special election. They included a provision that would fix this, only if it was to be signed, and only for the years to come. But there's, there's good and bad, both in this bill, and we've heard from a multitude of organizations that are fighting for the, the signage of it by the governor, but also fighting for a veto of it.
Next slide. So a number of these pieces of legislation were actually county priorities that we heard from you about before we started in the General Assembly. I'll take them from the bottom. The delegation chairwoman, Yasmin Neal, carried a piece of legislation essentially to create public facilities authority. It essentially will allow the county through this new vehicle to save money on the construction and investment in county facilities. I think it was obviously a high priority for a number of different projects that we've talked about over time for the county, so I know you all will be very familiar with it. I'm, House Bill 1146, passed or carried by Chairman Ron Stevens, was focused on requiring, I believe, the issuance of water permits in unincorporated areas where service otherwise would not be, wouldn't be available from wherever, whatever source was otherwise providing the water service. So I, as I understand it, this is an economic development bill, one that particularly for a county like Clayton, does have some unincorporated areas and does still need the delivery of service for private entities that otherwise wouldn't have access to it. And then, as we've done over the years, we've had a number of issues around pegging the salaries of leaders and members of the judiciary to, essentially to a static, a static number, so that we're not, the county isn't behind where other competing jurisdictions are in terms of being able to provide and recruit for judicial talent to represent the county and wear the robe behind the bench. Next slide. And so a couple of these are ACCG priority bills, again, just to the point that was made earlier, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, for the folks who are in the room, a group that we work very closely with. And in each of these cases, the ACCG, who represents Clayton County, was supportive, so we've, we had a bill that essentially would increase the public works threshold, but it did fail. I think it was mentioned earlier. It's one that has come before us before, and obviously, the governor and the last alleged, last year of the legislative session was willing to veto it. Service delivery strategy law revisions, I may ask my colleagues to speak to a couple of these others. And the single-county T-splosh was, or were two that mattered to us quite a great deal. I know we talked about the single-county T-splosh in years past, so glad to see House Bill 946 come forward, and as well as service delivery strategy law revisions. I'm not, I'm not as confident or clear on exactly what ACCG, ACCG and what the county's position was here, so I'll happily have PGR speak to this. But the last bill here, Senate Bill 293, also passed both the House and the Senate, and it essentially empowers local control with the district health directors, and ACCG here, in one case, was actually neutral on that, on that point.
Pause for one second, Mr. Franklin. So once again, for those that are here, oh, I'll wait for permission to speak, I apologize.
You've already started, please proceed.
Okay. So basically, for the citizens, HB 1407, you do want to make sure that you take a look at that? The service delivery strat, delivery strategy law revisions are directly related to the services that the county provides on behalf of both incorp, I mean, unincorporated and incorporated citizens, when you're talking about the fire department and so forth. Just want to make sure that while you're here, you know that pertains to you. The other thing is the T-splosh, just to give more additional information, that's the transportation splosh, which allows for us to, once again, be able to make sure that people are riding on roads that are a little bit smoother, as well as to be able to ensure that people can get from one destination to another.
Thank you for the clarification, you know, Commissioner Franklin, and in particular, T-splosh, I think is in keeping with a number of the things we've heard from this commission, from this community, about having more self-determination in terms of where economic development and infrastructure dollars ultimately go. Next slide. So always important to us, sometimes we'll have measures that have been hotly debated and contested, and sometimes they make it through the General Assembly, oftentimes when they do not, what we are left with is a study committee, where members of both chambers will say, this is a big issue, it's obviously impacting a number of constituents in the state of Georgia, we do want to spend more time, but we want to spend that time before we make a decision final or otherwise on those issues. So there are a number of them here that, that we'll be tracking, that may have impact on things that are priorities for Clayton County. A couple that jumped up for me were the alternatives to opioids for pain management, and I think we also talked a bit about the credit card fee on state sales and excise tax impact on Georgia merchants and consumers, but a number of others may have implications for what's happening in the county, county business and other stakeholders. So we certainly welcome any input you have for us to be laser-focused on these as they go forward. And again, worth noting, these get approved during the General Assembly, hopefully they will survive the governor's veto pen through May the 7th, and then they typically will meet three times between now and December, where they'll issue a final report, and oftentimes, the following legislative year is when we'll see legislation come forward based on what findings were, were held in these actual study committees. Next slide.
I wanted to mention one thing about study committees. As, as you as commissioners look through these study committees and decide you have a passion for any of them, please let us know, because this is an opportunity for you to testify, and we can let you know in advance, if we know that this is a committee you want to testify in front of, we can get you that audience with the chair of the study committee. We could make sure you have a few minutes to go and, and speak your piece, so to speak, to the General Assembly, and help mold how they make, what recommendations they make for the next session of the General Assembly.
Yeah. Ditto. Senate Resolution 476 is one that's gotten a lot of attention, the Study Committee on Artificial Intelligence. There's been a lot of discussion about how it's going to change a number of things about the way we currently live, you know, delivering services at the government level, all the way to private companies. So just wanted to mention this one, but I just would echo what Don said here, we definitely want your input for the study committees that matter to you. Next slide. This is all of our contact info, even though we're not all here in this moment, but as you guys know, one thing I just want to mention before we close out, one of the priorities that we've heard a lot about over the course of our representation of the county is arriving at a more equitable revenue sharing, revenue sharing agreement with Department of Aviation, Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta Airport. And what we've found is that, over the course, and I think I spoke to a little bit of this at the beginning of this presentation, as we've had new leaders elected and appointed to different positions, what we found in talking to different stakeholders, whether it's the City of Atlanta, Atlanta City Council, the mayor's office, Department of Aviation, or state lawmakers, who may or may not be as familiar with what took place some seven or eight years ago, that really put us in this conundrum to begin with, is that we didn't really have a singular accounting of all the things that took place, and really a way to help decision-makers both equitably understand and make recommendations for how we go forward. So we really want to take it upon ourselves to both reset this discussion, so we came up with, we, we built a timeline from the outset of this discussion, we're really starting in 2018, that we intend to share with you, as well as a strategy document, to really give us the tools to both share, again, with these stakeholders, who in some cases have been responsive and in other cases have not, and also just to make sure that the various stakeholders that are pulling in the same direction, that want to see Clayton County, Clayton County schools, and the various constituents of, of this community made whole financially and otherwise. So what we're proposing, both as a part of this recap, but just as also as a part of our service, is to get everyone together, the delegation, the county commission, other stakeholders that you may see as important, Department of Aviation, you know, Delta Airlines, et cetera, and really just start with, from scratch, at what has happened, what positive steps we have made, some of the discussions about years past, where we were able to get state lawmakers to consider ways that they could help make us whole, consider pots of money that they could tap into to address what we've lost, and then come forward with some, some solutions that we can agree upon and speak to with a unified voice. I think that's what's been missing. We hear you guys have an active delegation who've got their own legislative priorities. We've got a number of, again, stakeholders, the City of Atlanta, Department of Aviation. We would love to get everyone on the same page, we'll take whatever form you allow us to do that in, but we think this is an issue that's deserving of that degree of focus, and we want to make sure that we're serving you by addressing it in a way that will bring everyone to the same table. So just, I wanted to mention that, happy to talk about this more, and I can tell you from Tyler and Don and the rest of our team, our intent is after, after making this presentation, answering your questions, our intent is to follow up with you all, and including the other stakeholders that we've mentioned as a part of this process. But at this point, we'll take any questions you have.
Yeah, let me start off by saying, I agree somewhat of what you just said, but there has been a lot of conversation around revenue lost and how to discuss ways of recouping some of that lost revenue. We provided not only to yourself, but to the stakeholders in Clayton County, i.e. the school system, the delegation, this board. COO provided some information in reference to the delivery services that we provide at the airport, but don't get any revenue from.
100%, you're right.
So we don't need to start from scratch. There is a white paper or historical document that we can refer to, but getting all the stakeholders together to continue the talk, which we are, have been continuing, is paramount, because there is a lot of revenue that we're not getting out of the airport, that we definitely would, would, the taxpayers and citizens of Clayton County deserve nothing less than to be able to capitalize even more so, because I would be disingenuous if I said that we don't get anything out of the airport.
Sure.
But there's so much more that we should be getting that we're not getting, and we're going to continue to fight and fight and fight until we see something in that respect. So I appreciate that.
100% agree with you, and just let me apologize, my suggestion wasn't that we haven't been working on this issue, but just that we believe with some of the changing of the guard, that folks need to know how urgent an issue this is, and also broaden the scope of potential solutions that they are willing to consider for us to come together and address this issue once and for all.
And I will agree, there has been numerous stakeholder challenges, especially in the city. I think we've spoken to three different mayors about this.
You're right, you're right.
And we're still going to push, we're still going to push through it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for that clarity, because one thing we don't want to do is assume someone knows anything, because that will lead you down to a path that you would, of no return. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I know that staff will work diligently with you on that. Additionally, though, with the airport, one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that this is not a unique situation for Clayton County only. The amount of funds that we are not receiving from that airport because it sits within the county, majority of it does, however, it is run by a city, is also the same situation in, I think, at least two or three other jurisdictions throughout the U.S. So as we know, there is power in numbers, so, and I love your suggestion, but what I would like us to do is go a step further and make sure that we are communicating on a regular basis with those other individuals through our relationships that you all can help us form, and then, of course, what's available to us through the National Association of County Officials. I think that's going to be able to resonate a lot, but the citizens need to know, as you just said, bringing Delta to the table, that's a giant you're trying to bring to the table, but you know what? Even giants can, can change a course at times. I do have a quick question for you, however, and I apologize for negating it earlier, but it's SB 293, and it's dealing with the district health directors. I've received a couple of emails today in regards to there being a discussion about merging our health district with DeKalb County. So is there any other information that you could provide us with that, and how, was it addressed through this or not, and how will it affect us either way that goes?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'd start by saying, in essence, the discussion, and I think the, the charge that the county sent us to the General Assembly with was to go down to the General Assembly and a better understand what, what willingness DBHDD had to fund our CSP, the Clayton County CSP. And what we heard from the commissioner of, of that body was that his intent is actually to take, I think it's 21 or 22 CSPs from across the state, and to consolidate, and that his internal staff have already done their due diligence to figure out where they see opportunities for consolidation, but that they do want, in, in every instance where they're asking for partnership and consolidation, to make sure that communities that could be perceived as having lost an investment or lost, you know, facility in community can also see upside and gain. Excuse me. So what we were told by this leader, and I think leaders in the delegation are also very well aware of the discussions at least, really twofold. One was that at present, there weren't new dollars for operation, operating the Clayton County CSP that would be recommended by a DBHDD, right? And ultimately, what ends up happening is their recommendation carries the day. So they put forward who they recommend deserves additional dollars for capital improvement and for operations, and after that, we're really just, we're advocating for, in a void. I, I think separately, what we, what we asked the commissioner for, or, or relatedly, was what sort of proposal would come forward, so that you and members of this August body, as well as the delegation, now the stakeholders, could actually look at what this looks like. Is there a fair deal to be had? Are there economies of scale to be enjoyed, et cetera, so that we'd at least be able to meaningfully assess whether or not this is something we want to continue or consider, or if this is something that the county wants to take on as a, as a line item and fiduciary responsibility of its own. So that, that's, that's what the, the genesis of those discussions were. I think the, the last conversations that I was aware of, the commissioner wanted to talk directly to our delegation chairwoman and Representative Neal, and I'm aware that they've had some conversations. I don't, I'm not exactly sure where we left those conversations, and if they're, if they're, my understanding is that we didn't come to any agreement, but we will reiterate our request for specificity about this proposal ultimately. And the good news is that they can't force our hand, but the bad news is that there is, there are dollars attached to whatever recommendations come out of that office.
Thank you, and I've got two very important questions, that's to piggyback on what you said. The first one I'm going to begin with is understanding that because of the fact that we are the jurisdiction, that those within the airport, which oftentimes are the homeless, that are being arrested at that airport, who come to our county jail, those individuals do have mental health issues, so has that been taken into consideration at all?
You know, so what I can say is, I think yes is the answer. I know that our COO and our chairman, in the, in the document that I saw that went to the City of Atlanta around revenue sharing, there was definitely consideration for the additional and undue financial stress that's put on the county for exactly what you're talking about. I'm, I don't have as much specificity, when the commissioner came to us with this discussion or with this idea, I think he was coming at this from a very different perspective, which was, how can I find new economies of scale and new efficiencies in taking this number of CSPs from, I want to say again, 21 or 22, to I think his number was 13 or 14?
That's across the state of Georgia.
That's across the state of Georgia, not just, not just Clayton County. So that, that's an ongoing conversation. Again, his office doesn't dictate that, but there is a recommendation for funding, and ultimately, yeah, I know that the county's willing to make capital investment. I think the question, I think we're all asking here is about the operational investment the county's willing to make.
Right. One more quick question regarding that. Are you able to share which metro Atlanta counties did receive additional funding?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know it off the top of my head, because we've just been focused on Clayton in this case, and you guys are the only county we represent in this case.
Right.
But happy to get back to you quick, fast, in a hurry, with that information, whether we go directly with the commissioner, or if we're just, we're funded through other means.
Awesome. So for, for the record, even though this is just a work session, the reason I ask that question is because I'm interested in knowing if it's Fulton County, who generally does get the additional funding, because they're a state within a state, which does flow down to Atlanta, and then I'm interested to know if it's DeKalb. One of the things that came out in the email is that the new director of, of the mental health director is thinking about merging us with DeKalb County. There are great concerns for that. Number one, because you're merging us with a county that doesn't even have as much of an effect on us as Fulton and the City of Atlanta, that's number one. Number two, you're merging us with a larger county, which both have, are considered almost states within a state, and we're going to get lost in the middle of all of that. So if a merger has to occur, then it seems like the more logical fit would be to merge with a county such as Fayette County, who has been asking to be able to work with Clayton County to leverage that overhead cost, that's some things, something I've been talking to the commissioners of Fayette County, and they've actually brought that forth to us. So just something to kind of keep in mind.
That's really great information, and again, the impression I got from DBHDD commissioner was a willingness to talk this through and to figure out what the best solution was going forward. So I think he, he had an idea when we first heard that this had been discussed, and that his staff had already informed some of the conclusions that they had reached, but this sounds like something that would be, would be, would be great to bring back to him.
If he's genuine, he'll have a meeting with all of us and not just one individual, and I set that purpose, at least, so hopefully y'all can deliver that message, and I approve that message, because the people deserve much better. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Let me say this. Exactly what you just spoke on, Commissioner Franklin, is exactly the conversations that's being had. There's health districts that's in certain quarters or quantrons throughout the state that, according to the commissioner, Tanner, that this, if it happens, would be the best fit, and ultimately, it's going to be his decision. But there's also an impact to this community, and you're right about the monies that would come. come through would be regulated and handled by DeKalb County. But when it comes down to whether or not we merge with Fayette, I think at one time before, there was Spalding County, Bucks County, and now they're talking about DeKalb County, but it's just DeKalb, it would just be, would it be just be DeKalb and Clayton?
It would just be DeKalb and Clayton, and I neglected to say, I think part of the Commissioner Tanner's rationale was pairing some of the larger and more financially solvent CSPs with those who didn't have as much resource to bring to the table. I don't know the status of where Fayette is, but I think this is all meaningful. And again, I think he came to the conversation already having some idea, but I don't think, I think he would be better served to hear from us and from you directly about what sort of needs there are, and where there's contiguous and corresponding need. I think that that's something he absolutely signaled a willingness to hear.
As a headline, that sounds good, but until they give us some numbers, then I'm not believing it, and I think this is not a good decision for our county, until I see something different.
Yeah, but unfortunately, it's Commissioner Tanner's decision, but we can still try to force his hand and let him know why we benefit by keeping ours the way it is currently.
Chairman, as a member, as a board, the Board of Manager of ACCG, this is something that I vehemently oppose. Fulton County is by themselves, Gwinnett is by themselves, Cobb is by themselves. We have many of these metro Atlanta counties that are not in partnership, but we're the only one that has been held to a lower standard, I should say, in putting us under that. And with the opioid funding now coming down the pipe, and applications going out as of yesterday, for the most part, what are we going to get? We have to go to DeKalb County to find out what we have to get.
Well, the decision hasn't been made.
It has been made, and I think this is something for the next session we've got to begin to address.
Anything, I would just want to, real quick, say, anything that's done can be undone. I want to make sure we're clear on that. Again, that's power in numbers. If you could, and I agree with Commissioner Davis on that, because I too, as he stated, very involved with other elected officials, and this is a concern, and we shouldn't just take it and accept it. We need to push back against it. Everybody has a boss, at the end of the day, who, remind us to the audience, who actually appoints this Commissioner, Commissioner Tanner?
Governor makes that appointment.
Well, that's my point, and an election is coming up, and let's all keep that in mind.
Well, I just, again, just to wrap this up, because I know, we are happy to have more conversations like these, and really, I'm appreciative of the interest you all have taken in this particular issue. What I would say, Commissioner Davis, I'm so glad you mentioned ACCG. I think we mentioned a couple of bills that have been supported by ACCG. We should definitely strategize about pulling our association into this fight. I know that there are other counties across Georgia's 159 that are also impacted by this, and have probably also have conversations like the ones we have with Commissioner Tanner. We'd love to make this a statewide issue and an issue that the association would pick up for us, to acknowledge the strength in numbers that we heard from Mateus earlier, so.
Chairman, may I ask one last thing?
Go ahead.
As far as the airport goes, did I hear you say you have a strategy in place, or you're putting a strategy in place?
Yeah, so we've been pursuing a number of strategies, as you heard from the chairman, right? We've worked on a piece of legislation. I'll just give a quick recap. We worked on legislation to administratively or legislatively compel the city to start to pony up or to pay some of the lost revenues. We've gone directly, and I think the COO and the Chairman and other members of the staff have been most engaged in the conversations directly with Department of Aviation, Hartsfield-Jackson, and the Mayor's Office. We've talked about, and I know you guys have kept us abreast of some of the federal efforts that have been made to potentially revise some of the rules that ultimately made it impossible for those taxes coming from an enterprise zone to be paid out to an outside jurisdiction in the first place. So I think at every level, federal, state, and local, we have been engaged. We just, we realize that this is a very big lift, and it's, so far, it seems that the solutions that we've been able to wrangle out of the partners that we have, haven't met with your approval. So we want to make sure we're saying, let's reset, let's clear the board, and let's figure out all the things that are at our disposal.
If there is a strategy in place, can this board get a copy of your strategy with your timeline and milestone?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
Great job, you all.
Did you have something?
I did.
Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioner Franklin, two other things that we wanted to ensure that we highlighted. Of course, Ohio River South and Petrie Government Relations do a phenomenal job in providing us context about our state relationship, and also ensuring that they work with our local delegation on a lot of different fronts. I just wanted, for public consumption, there's been discussions with our senators, who have done a phenomenal job in making some traction from the FAA side of the House. If we all remember, Senator Warnock and Senator Ofsdorf did a phenomenal job in ensuring that they got some of the preliminary discussion through the House Committee up in DC, to ensure that from a funding standpoint, we're actually are at least at the table to have discussions about how that additional funding can come to the county. And so one of the two things that we're doing from a strategic standpoint, as we work with our lobbyists, is two things. Not only ensuring that they are hearing that conversation from a federal level, but also ensuring that as we get that information, there's more solvent discussions with our local community, to ensure that our citizens here, specifically what we're doing from a legislative standpoint, to ensure that that actually is being at least escalated in a different way. So we're working directly with the department heads that may have more of a synergistic relationship with some of our lobbying initiatives, to ensure that they're communicating with their staff, as well as communicating with the different constituency within your respective districts, to ensure that they're at least hearing about it before it comes before a work session. So therefore, if the community have some general questions about their direction, we're heading in. From a strategy standpoint, they're hearing it before we bring it to the board, in a, I guess, a policy discussion way. So therefore, we can kind of answer some of the general questions about some of the elementary things that might be taking place, to at least educate our general public about our lobbying efforts. So those kind of the two delineations that we're making is for us change. One, talking about our relationship from a federal standpoint, and then more importantly, ensuring that that information to our local constituency is being heard in a different way. So we just wanted to make sure that we kind of elevated that, as we talked specifically about our lobbying initiatives, as our lobbyists come forth and give you these quarterly updates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think the gentleman, Mr. Cameraman, wanted to get his mic. Come on down.
All right. As he's coming, the next, we will hear the Leadership Awards Program.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin.
Is our Chief Finance Director here to charge him rent for leaving that mic up there?
Yes.
Chief Merks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
On the desk in front of you should be your official Welcome to the Shift t-shirt. Feel free to put it on, real quick, if you want to.
I ain't trying to do that.
It is indeed an honor to come before you this evening and update you on where we are with the shift and some new initiatives. But before I get into it, I would like to recognize members of our department leadership who came out tonight to support this initiative and this effort, as this is for them, and this presentation is for them. So if y'all would please stand.
Yeah.
Fellow shifters. And then specifically, members of my staff, the COO's office, Dr. Adakari, and our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Jay Fordham, for helping me build out this program in conjunction with the COO. Go ahead, please. Thank you. So real quick, our agenda, we're just going to give you a quick update on the shift, the awards program and our objectives, and then kind of a breakdown of the awards that we will be bringing forth at the end of the year. And it's important to note that this process, if you remember going back to January of last year, we talked about kind of the board's desire and our desire to kind of have a fundamental change in how we go about conducting the business of the county, and that's from a leadership perspective, and really kind of just a holistic approach. Since that time, we've been kind of going through this iteration and this process of trying to understand where we are, where our areas of improvement are, and kind of where our leadership felt they were in their professional and personal development. And that's kind of the first major initiative that we're bringing forth as a result of those conversations. Go ahead. If you'll remember, the shift comprises a range of initiatives that are dedicated to fostering diversity and inclusion within Clayton County government. Our aim is to cultivate an environment where employees thrive, excel, and find fulfillment in their work through active listening and inclusion. We ensure that every voice is valued by embracing diversity. We empower everyone to contribute to enhance processes and organizational efficiencies within their roles. Go ahead. When we started this program, we sat down and we built out kind of what we deem our four-step process to building an engaged workforce. And this has kind of been our roadmap, as we've rolled out different initiatives with our leadership and fostered different conversations with them. Step one was to define what our current culture was through our series of engagement surveys, which we rolled out over the first few months. We set an action plan of how we were going to mitigate that, and this is some of the results of those early studies and those early surveys that we did. And then we're evaluating that quarterly. We're now moving into step two of our process, which is building out our mentorship program for our department leadership, and we're starting that kickoff with that. But we wanted to bring that to the forefront by putting out an initiative to look at recognizing the work that our leadership does on a yearly basis and a daily basis for the county. Go ahead. Just a real brief timeline of some of the events that we did. As I said, this all came about in early January. I started working directly with the COO to kind of lay out what would this process look like. So in May, we sent out our first change readiness survey, and that was done just to kind of gauge where our department leadership was, and where they felt their role would be in a change, or a shift, so to speak. We followed that up in August with a very comprehensive engagement survey that covered about 10 to 15 different elements. It was about 55 questions long. We got that data in, we correlated all that data. That related to department interviews that were held the month of September. Chief Fordham went out, had one-on-one interviews with department heads, and just kind of talked to them about diversity and inclusion, what that means to them and their organization. We then, based off all that data, broke everybody up into what we deem culture pods, their individual culture pods, which are small groups, are on their sleeves. They have their own unique logos and team names, and those were in your culture and performance report. I believe yours says Commissioners. We didn't want to name you, but we just named you Commissioners. So outside of the culture pods, you remember we had the Big Culture Pod Greg Gray event over at the Performing Arts Center, that was tied in with some leadership training, and then we had our end-of-year leadership meeting held by the COO, to kind of go over where our events and where we would move forward over the next year. So briefly, just to kind of give you some ideas of where we came up with the Leadership Recognition Program. Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead. One of the big survey components was feedback and recognition in our engagement survey, and as you can see, overall, for the factor score, we scored a 55% favorable rating for how our leadership feels they are recognized, and that's comprised of the two questions that you see highlighted in the red box. The first question was, the right people are rewarded and recognized at Clayton County, which had a 44% favorable rating. And the second one was, I receive appropriate recognition for good work at Clayton County, that had a 63% favorable rating. So when you factor those in together, overall, it came with 55% favorable, 32% neutral, and 13% were unfavorable. So we kind of just focused on this metric and several other ones, as to what is some low-hanging fruit that we can put out there, to show the leadership how much we appreciate them and the work that they do for the citizens of the county. Also, to kind of increase engagement and communication back and forth between the Office of the COO and our leadership and the board, because this is a top-down program that we put in play here. It was the will of this board for us to engage our leadership more directly and understand, how do we create a more productive and synergistic workforce? So one of the ways that we'll be doing it is by bringing forth an engagement app as well, that we're currently building out, that will be a platform by which department heads can communicate with each other, as well as the COO's office about things that are going on within the workforce, not necessarily project-related, but more interpersonal-type relationships that we can continue to cultivate amongst our staff and the COO's office. So the awards program that we will be bringing forth, this program will be a year-long program that we offer several different opportunities for our pods to participate in. The primary goals of these awards is to encourage efforts and recognize results, to enhance our employee morale, promote teamwork within and between departments through the culture pods, and then ensure leadership support for our employees. As I said, I wanted this to be an all-inclusive process, so y'all are included, and you have awards that you can also put out there. So our first award that we will issue will be called the Commissioners Cup. The Commissioners Cup will be an overall award that's given to the culture pod that accumulates the highest points in different initiatives hosted by the Office of the COO. That may be team presentations at meetings, team trivia, cookout competitions, and more. So as we go throughout the year, we may award certain points for their participation in community events, Commissioner events, whatever the case may be. We'll tally all those up at the end of the year and make a recommendation to you to issue what will be our initial this year inaugural Commissioners Cup. So we view that as kind of a perpetual trophy, kind of Stanley Cup-ish, where the pod name will just kind of have their name on it, and they get to keep it for the year. The next award, these are what we're determining, are terming Excellence and Action Awards. These are district awards. So these honors exceptional employee contributions in a designated Commissioner District. Eligible nominees demonstrate remarkable dedication, initiative, and impact on projects benefiting constituents. Examples may include involvement in district-specific park beautification or volunteering support to youth organizations in different districts. As you can see, there are five awards presented, one per Commissioner. This is your choice. And it does not have to be a department head. It can be any county employee that provides exemplary service to your district, in whatever shape, form, or fashion. So it's kind of left up to you to determine what that recognition can be. It certainly can be a department head, but it's not specific to a department head. Next. Next, obviously, we have our Director of the Year Award, and this award is based on a thorough assessment of nominations received from employees countywide. The criteria for winning the award will focus on the department head who has shown exceptional collaboration with and between departments, active engagement, and has notably improved employees' work experiences as reported by those employees. So there will be a platform that comes out, we'll be working with IT here in the next few weeks to develop a platform by which nominations can be brought in throughout the year. We'll gather those, we'll come up with the top three or so, and then we will forward those over to the board to make a decision whom they feel is worthy of the Director of the Year. Next. Deputy Director of the Year follows the same criteria. It's just held for the deputy director position or that number two kind of in management position, depending on how each individual department is structured. And then finally, the award that will be offered by the Chief Operating Officer is termed our Culture Champion, and this, we'll grant this award to the individual who epitomizes the shift's principles and serves as its foremost exemplar. The recipient will be the one who has made the most significant impact on the initiative spearheaded by the COO's office, particularly in fostering collaboration among pod members, generating innovative ideas to engage the pods, and actively promoting harmony and accountability within the team. And obviously, there's only one of those per year. So it is our hope and our wish, we've included some funding in the COO's budget, if y'all so choose to approve it, to where we can have this program, fund this program, and then have a nice banquet toward the end of the year, where we can bring leadership, their families, and all the award recipients together and celebrate a job well done for the citizens of Clayton County. So with that, I thank you, and we'll entertain any questions you may have.
Let me start by saying that we appreciate y'all bringing this forth. I always say that our employees are our greatest and biggest asset, and we really need to make sure that we give them the flowers while they're still around. They do an excellent job, and we truly appreciate, truly appreciate all that they do. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes, Chief. Under feedback and recognition, you had those percentages, favorable, something in the middle.
Neutral.
Yes, and then I think it was 13% unfavorable. Is there a way you can find out what, I mean, how did we come to that, or how did we get that number, or is it something we can do to help with that?
We can dig as deep into that, ma'am, as you would like to go. So like I said, there's probably 55 questions that made up that survey.
Okay.
So within that, we can bore down into that and explain exactly why they feel the way they do.
Okay. Or is it something that we can work on?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we held, we held individual kind of discussions around the survey results, and we'll be settling those up with y'all as well, to kind of go through what that survey looks like in total.
Okay, okay.
But yes, ma'am, we certainly can.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, statements? Mr. COO?
First of all, I want to give a big kudos to our Deputy COO. He does a phenomenal job in providing context to the work as a whole. But as we continue to move forward, and we know that the board, this board has been very gracious in trying to figure out compensatory factors, primarily monetary opportunities for our respective employees, and we're doing a great job in ensuring that we elevate that. But we recognize that sometimes just a profound appreciation for what you do on a day-to-day basis go a long way for our employees, because everybody wants... go a long way for our employees, because everybody wants to feel appreciated for what they do. And so we certainly hope the board sees value in this program and elevating that. And so with that being said, we have one of our department heads, I thought, has already got outside the box. And I want to publicly applaud her for a job well done in cultivating the resources as a whole. The HR department just recently did a gratitude day last week, and it was really well reserved, really well-received by our employees. So I'd like to thank Director Ambrose for her work along with her team in ensuring that we're always trying to find innovative ways by which we elevate what we do in the county. But more importantly, ensure that our employees see that they're certainly appreciated for the work that they do. So again, thank you to our team, whether it's Dr. Akari, Mr. Fordham, and that team that really puts a lot of energy and time in our space. We just really look for it from the feedback from the board about assisting us with moving this shift in the right direction.
Thank you. Appreciate you both. Thank you for the work that you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Mentor protege program update. Ms. Rogers.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. As we talk about innovation with the county, once again, we want to bring to you tonight an update on the mentor protege program. This is a program with the board and certainly the support of the COO's office that we actually implemented in 2022. We brought to you all last year this first successful cohort, which was our construction. We quickly moved into our second cohort, which was our A and E firm Designs. And tonight, I want to give an update on that and also make sure that you're aware of where we're at with our new cohort. So I'm going to allow Eddie Eves, who is our compliance officer for our program coordinator, to give you all an update on where we're at with our mentor program.
All right, thank you, Carol, and good evening, Commissioners. I am extremely grateful to be back in front of you today to talk about the mentor protege program and the ongoing developments and updates that we've seen since the first cohort. We have been able to really refine and streamline the processes within the mentor protege program to a point that we are now three cohorts in. We've seen a multitude of success with, you know, our different proteges. And we'll jump right into the presentation to get that started. So the purpose of the mentor protege program is to help our eligible small businesses gain capacity and opportunities to bid on county contracts through partnerships with more experienced companies that are willing to fulfill that mentor role. We've been able to secure some really tremendous companies to actually come onboard the mentor protege program and actually work with our small local business community to develop their competencies, really help them get on a track with their business to be able to go out and do business with the county and to build up their respective competencies within their organization. An overall overview of the program. The program was created in February 2022 and was implemented with the mission to foster a more competitive environment for our Clayton County projects and building a broader base of our small local business enterprises, which is our SLBEs. The program's immediate objective is to strengthen the long-term stability of our SLBE firms. So again, cultivating, you know, those partnerships to be able to really learn and strengthen their respective competencies in their organizations and focusing resources on critical business skills so that suppliers, that suppliers will need to compete successfully in the open market. So again, we've been able to see with the partnerships between our mentors and our proteges, you know, across a multitude of construction, A and E, and now going into our third cohort, our construction cohort, you know, the ability to go out and bid on these contracts and do work with the county. All right, next slide. All right. Trainings and resources. Our proteges have attended virtual workshops and trainings where they have gained invaluable knowledge on contracting and topics tailored to areas of their company's development. Some of these topics rely on bonding, you know, again, putting them in avenues where we can give them those training and skills to be able to go out and bond, acquire bonding, and also their respective competencies when they're growing in areas such as estimating and contracting, things of that nature. Our proteges have received training from our Small Business Development Center, SCORE Atlanta, and Georgia Tech Procurement Center. We also want to shout out the SBA. They came onboard the program and with their, through their Start Smart training, they were able to really kind of lock in with our proteges and help them through an eight-week course of developing their respective organizations and their business skills there. What we're very excited to announce is the assistance of Tamika Puckett with Public Sector and Education Industry Vertical. She will be coming aboard for our most recent cohort that we just launched, our third construction cohort, where she will be providing assistance in insurance and bonding. So very excited about that opportunity there and particularly coming with the training opportunities with our respective proteges for this next cohort. Next slide. And business development is a critical piece of the mentor protege program. So we have actually been able to invite our proteges out to workshops and professional events. We've had a number of our proteges participate in our How To Do Business virtual workshop, both virtually and in person, the best practice workshop for invitations to bids and RFPs, and GDOT, the DB Marketplace, as well as our proteges coming out to our SPO supplier fair. So again, having, trying to create those opportunities for our proteges to really come out and grow their businesses and actually learn. And a critical piece of the business development piece of the mentor protege program is the professional development plans. Each protege receives a binder with a streamlined strategy on how they can actually grow their respective businesses. And through the guidance of their mentor, and we actually have one with us this evening, they actually work with them to really kind of grow in those specific areas of opportunity that they really wanted to kind of streamline their processes in. Some virtual trainings that we've been able to offer over the course of the program is pricing models for successful businesses, legal requirements for small business administration, how to create a capability statement and great elevator speech. I can definitely attest in receiving capability statements for this cohort that, you know, a lot of the training that the program has offered is really, you know, helping our small local businesses grow in their respective competencies there. Year-end tax planning, that has been facilitated by SCORE, and how to write a one-page business plan. So again, just giving them those opportunities to be able to come onboard and really develop their respective businesses through the guidance of their respective mentorship, mentor firm. Next slide. So as with any program, we really want to monitor the successes and challenges. With the challenges, I can definitely say that we've been able to see our proteges really step up to the plate and address those challenges. So with that, I'll talk about the successes first. We'll go, some of the successes that we've seen with the proteges is their recommendations for building capacity. Our protege firms have been able to significantly, excuse me, benefit from mentors' tips and feedbacks and gain insights into operational efficiency, project management, and workforce development. So again, all of this is in their business development plan. They work with their mentor on a monthly basis with those respective skill areas. Our mentor protege interactions, when it comes to building capacity, has gone into strategic planning that has provided frameworks to assess their strengths, weaknesses, and implement initiatives for overall competitiveness in the marketplace. All of this is in, on a month-to-month basis with their respective mentor firm. Supplier networking. Our mentors have done a tremendous job with growing our respective proteges in project collaboration discussions and market exploration, and particularly expanding the protege firms' networks and connecting them with potential suppliers and facilitating those strategic partnerships to access specialized expertise. And lastly, opportunities to bid. We've been able to see our protege firms actually, through their mentor encouragement and involvement, pursue bidding opportunities both with the county and leveraging insights and industry connections to develop those competitive bids and explore a wider range of project opportunities. Now, some of the challenges, and again, we've, through the course of our cohorts, been able to see our proteges really step up to the plate in this regard, has been access to financing. So they've communicated those specific components. Mentor engagements have included discussions on refining their financial processes and procurement strategies and providing insights and guidance on accessing those financing options. Our protege firms have actively participated, again, just stepping up to the challenge for these opportunities in discussions with mentors regarding project collaborations and new market opportunities, which have led to them actually going down respective avenues for securing financing through partnerships and project funding arrangements. The ability to obtain bonding, again, which is why we are fortunate to be partnering with Public Sector and Education Industry Vertical in this regard. They've communicated over the course of the program that in project discussions, their market exploration has opened doors, and particularly with their bonding capacity through discussions with their mentor. And this has necessitated bonding to our respective protege firms through practical context and exploring their bonding capacity and reliability. With the additional ability of them obtaining bonding, the protege firms have actively bid on projects with their mentors and have actually benefited from mentor introductions or endorsements, bolstering their credibility and increasing, you know, the, their likelihood, excuse me, their likelihood of securing bonding from insurers or bonding companies. We have seen through our protege firms that their ability to actually go out with bonding companies and actually secure bonding has actually grown exponentially over the course of our cohorts. Next slide. We've expanded our outreach efforts. So we have now created the first edition, now third edition, of the Mentor Protege Program Quarterly Newsletter. This newsletter just, it basically encapsulates both what that current cohort is doing and overall what the program is doing over the duration of that respective cohort and over the duration of the program itself. We're three issues in now, so if you get a chance, I was like, go check it out on the Clayton County website. It's pretty dynamic to see, you know, the work that our mentors and proteges particularly have been doing over the course of the program. And we had the great fortune to get with the Communications Department and launch the first episode of the Mentor Protege Program podcast. That launched in September 2023. I'm sure Carol will have us going back at some point to discuss a little bit more about the tremendous work we're doing with the program. Next slide. So we are actually, with the kickoff ceremony of our cohort two, Architecture and Engineering, this specific cohort saw a multitude of successes. We saw a lot of opportunities where our respective mentor and protege firms were able to pair up in some actual alignment with projects. Next slide. This cohort actually closed out as of April 6 of 2024, and we were able to bring on five mentor firms and five protege firms. Each of these firms were paired together, and we saw a lot of great work with their respective partnerships there. And some of it you will hear tonight from one of our esteemed mentors who is with us today. Right, next slide. So some of the successes from our Architecture and Engineering cohort, the mentor successes through our check-ins each month with them. They communicated, particularly Merzada Illick with WSP and George Fergulus with Pond, how they were able to actively collaborate with their proteges on refining their respective strategies and exploring future ventures. They, the mentors were actually able to really line up with their strategic guidance with their proteges. And some of our mentors, such as Keith Solomon with Gardner and Talia Scott with Moody Nolan, were able to provide strategic insights and celebrate those respective achievements with their proteges and particularly emphasize the importance of the month-to-month communication and when it comes to overall project success with our protege firms. The commitment to collaboration, our mentors, such as Mr. Wumble with Praxis, was able to acknowledge project alignment and identify areas for improvement and affirm sustainable collaborative efforts with their proteges, which have actually continued to progress going into the closeout of this cohort. Our proteges communicated some remarkable successes, particularly in the areas of just how efficient the process with, that we've gotten with the mentor protege program. We meet monthly with them. They communicate to us what's working with the relationship, with the partnership, what's not working. We address those challenges internally and through discussions with the mentor and the protege come to, you know, a relative resolution when it comes to their respective, any issues addressed. We've been fortunate where each pairing opportunity has been fruitful. It's been pretty successful, and they have actually gone on to some, some project alignment down the line. And some of this has been in construction projects and strategy meetings. Proteges such as Chuafe Architects and RSC Technologies with this specific cohort have actively pursued project opportunities both in Clayton County and outside of Clayton County. And they've addressed their respective challenges and sought mentor guidance to enhance their networking and pricing strategies. And just overall proactive engagement with our mentor and protege firms. They've demonstrated proactive engagement with their mentors, reporting progress on projects, and expressing overall satisfaction with the program. So again, they've been able to really go out into the county with the guidance of their respective mentors and work on their specific project strategies. Next slide. And we are fortunate to now be in the first month of our Cohort Three, which is our construction firms. We brought on for this cohort three mentor firms and five protege firms. We were actually able to reengage media constructions, so definitely want to give them a shout out. They were actually a mentor in the first cohort and decided to come back in and engage with the county to be able to take on not just one protege this time, but two proteges. And they've been facilitating services with them. I think their first meeting is next week, so we'll be checking in at the end of the month with all of our mentors to see what's been working, what may not be working with the program and as we get this cohort up and running. Next slide. And this is our Cohort Three Construction. Next slide. So what we're really excited about is our Small Business Social, which will be held on May 9 of this year from 6 to 8. We will actually be using, this will be a time for our small local businesses to come together and actually network. We will actually be closing out Cohort Two, our A and E cohort, at this event. And just the ability internally with central services to be able to show our appreciation to our small local business community and, you know, really celebrate the work that they've done, both with the mentor protege program and just our SLBEs as a whole. Next slide. And with that, I will open the floor up for any questions.
It definitely looks like y'all have done a lot of work. Thank you for what you're bringing to the county and the community, especially the small businesses. We all know that if our business, especially our small businesses are strong, then they're going to be successful in our community. And therefore, it translates into a stronger county. So thank you for all the work that y'all are doing in that respect. Are there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
How do you get the mentors? Are they volunteers, or is there some kind of deal that you all have as far as qualifications?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, what we do is that we do look at vendors that are on our current projects that are performing services, and we go to them first to see if they have availability. So Pond Company, one of our A and E firms, also participated as a mentor. So we always go there first because they're familiar with the county's procedure policies. And we think it is a good faith effort to give back to the county to assist our small local businesses. So that is one of the things. And we do have criteria that they have to meet. There are certain expectations that that mentor has to have in order to ensure they have the resources to assist with our proteges. So yes, ma'am, that's where we first start. And if not, we will also look at vendors who have done work with the Clayton, the Board, the Board of Education. So we look at some of those as well, because it's still a part of Clayton County. And that's where we start looking for our mentors. And the proteges come out of our SLBE program, and they have to qualify for that as well. And the proteges come out of our SLBE program, and they have to qualify for that as well.
Okay, do you work toward the proteges becoming mentors?
We do work for, toward them becoming more primes, so that they can come out of that subcontracting world and become business capacity to become primes who at some point will become mentors, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question. Very good presentation, great work, great purpose. At what point will we start seeing some dollar amounts as to the, each one of these groups in their participation, so that we can see the dollars going back into the community? Also, are we able to know if each one of these five, I guess, proteges, how many of them are actually based out of Clayton County? Because the deal is not just to get small businesses involved, but to get our dollars circulating around our community more. Because we have so many contracts, and it goes straight out of our county. And I'm so glad y'all are going to Flint River. I was trying not to say this. So you want to go, proteges will probably say they know that floor needs to be replaced, and I won't have to keep getting complaints on that construction project.
So, great question. So what we do look at is, as far as the dollars, what we look at tracking is the number of bids that they have been awarded by their participation in the program. So I'll give you an example. We bought the first construction cohort to you all last year. And one of our proteges out of that, even though she didn't win a contract with Clayton County, she did win a contract with the surrounding county for, I think it was a quarter of a million dollars. So we're able to track that if they are participating in our bid process, if we can see what they have been awarded. The second part is when we talk about vendors that are in our area, the whole purpose of us doing the proteges, they have to be a part of the small local business program. Therefore, they are already within Clayton County. If not, they're within the county surrounding Clayton.
I'm very clear on that because I once did that process. But I want to specifically know, just as you stated in the next presentation, for me, my one ask is to bring more quantitative data. I have no questions of the quality of your program, but in order for us to know whether it's truly working or not and what's the impact, we need the quantitative data. Because if this, and I'm happy for the individual, but how is it helping our basis of our economy if we are sponsoring it? If we're putting the money into it? Because when you're looking at the area, that's the metro Atlanta area. I want to know how many other small business owners that live in this county, based out of this county, are a part of this program.
And we can certainly bring those numbers back. I think one of the challenges that I will always say with SLBE is making sure that we have vendors registered in Clayton County. I have the same concern as you. When we started implementing this program, I'm, I'm looking and I'm like, okay, all our small businesses are coming from the surrounding counties. Part of that challenge is having those resources within Clayton County. How many construction companies do we have? How many A and E firms do we have that we can recruit within Clayton County to become SLBE? So we have to look at what the county is producing for businesses to determine how do they match up with services that we need. So we get vendors to register, and a lot of times it's not in service areas that the county needs assistance in. So we're very, very, very vigorous about going after Clayton County businesses. We actually work with community development to get the Clayton County Business License information, and we go directly to those vendors. But once again, the services that the county needs has to line up with the businesses that the county is producing. And that's sometimes a challenge.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Carol, I think your program will help with that.
Right.
To promote more businesses, small businesses in Clayton County. And the more they learn about it, then, you know, the more participants will have. So I think what you're doing now will help with that.
And we've had vendors that actually have, that actually brought into the county a sub, I would say like a substation. So we've had vendors who want to be a part of the SLBE program realize, hey, I'm out of bounds. If I move and I have a satellite company in Clayton County, will that help me? As we enter now into the construction phase, we're getting to release a lot of SLOs projects in construction, then we're looking forward to having those vendors onboard as well. And before you all have any more questions, we do have one more little presentation we want to present. So I'll.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Just one minute, we'll make it quick, Commissioner.
Talking about, you know, kind of tangible, you know, measurements of success with the program. We feel that, you know, the testimony of our mentors and proteges is a big part of, you know, at least a small piece of what the program is doing. So, next slide, please. Without further ado, we wanted to bring up one of our mentors from our A and E Cohort Two. Mr. Garrett Wong would talk about his experience with the program.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having me. I enjoyed preparing to talk with you all tonight and looking back over the past 12 months of participation in this program, we have accomplished a lot. Myself and my business partners are so appreciative of the opportunity to have participated in the Mentor Protege Program. And I definitely want to thank Eddie and Tammy and Carol for their leadership and guidance throughout the process. I know I speak for the whole cohort when I say that their encouragement and leadership was motivating and the core of the program's success. My company, Praxis Three, is an architecture and interior design firm. We were paired with Kevin Champion, who is the owner of ME Cubed, an MEP engineering firm. Kevin and I initially started meeting once a week, actually, for the first half of the program. At some point towards the second half of the program, we switched to biweekly meetings. We had good momentum at that point and a good rapport with one another that we felt like that frequency was sufficient. So we spent our first few sessions working on getting to know one another. He got to visit our office, visited his, meet one another's colleagues. We developed an agenda for, to guide us and structure. I'm a planner by, by trade. So we had very structured conversations and always knew, showing up to each of those weekly or biweekly meetings, exactly what it was that we were going to discuss. So after we got to know one another, the size and organization of each of our companies, the services that each of us provide, the project types that each of us are most experienced with and those that we wanted to be more experienced with, we started diving into that agenda. I was able to tap individual colleagues of mine that have different areas of expertise, whether that's human resources or, you know, operations or accounting, things like that, to address the specific agenda items in a way that by myself I wouldn't have been able to do, to Kevin's benefit and our benefit, working together. The primary subjects that we covered were on the training and development of new staff. He is in growth mode, and he is bringing on new employees. So that was important to him. Both with experienced colleagues, he's looking for other leaders within his organization as well as internship programs to continue to bring up the next generation of engineers within his organization. So we reviewed ways of identifying and onboarding ownership partners to that end on the leadership level. And then, you know, Kevin is a smart man and is looking towards his future business transition and how his company continues on, you know, in his retirement, it may be some decades out, but he's thinking about those sorts of things. So we discussed strategies for business development and identifying and really focusing our efforts on primary sectors to develop deeper portfolios. It's much easier to be awarded work when you can show that you've done a dozen relevant things than to be spread too thin, in my experience, as starting a smaller business as well. So we also did consider how to enter new markets with less experience, strategies that we might use to pursue new relationships and opportunities and how the development of fees works. As an architect, we are often responsible for hiring an MEP engineer as a consultant to our team. And so I was able to share very transparently with him what our expectations are, what his competitors are charging, rules of thumb for pricing projects that would make him more successful, not just with our firm, but other firms that he may be working with as a consulting partner. At an operational level, we reviewed how to identify and track overhead expenses, something that was an emerging need of his, how to determine an individual staff member's hourly rates, something that made him able to really dial in, dial in his fees and be very competitive to know exactly what he's paying individuals and what he should be charging for their time in addition to that overhead. And our lessons learned on tracking and maintaining project profitability. In my time at Praxis Three, we have grown from fewer than 20 people to a firm of 80 professionals today. So I think that that was especially effective in our participation with the protege group because we have been a much smaller firm and something in between. And even today, 80 people is, in Atlanta, Georgia, or the metro region, a fairly small architecture firm. So we were able to share the tools that we use that are sometimes fairly unsophisticated but effective that we use to track our project backlog relative to available staff, which is a key consideration for someone that is in a growing firm, so they can identify the need for new work, whether they need to hire and other considerations that come along with an evolving workload. As important as all the items I've mentioned are in terms of both of our continued development, of equal importance, in this past year, we've pursued work together and we've been successful. We're currently working together on an advanced manufacturing workforce development center that doubles both in that capacity to train community members for emerging and returning jobs, specifically related to manufacturing and industry that is happening here in the southeast, that I think this is the first of many projects that, you know, when I was talking earlier about having a portfolio, I don't, I don't know how anyone got started doing anything because owners typically expect you to have done it several times before they're willing to give you a chance. So this was our chance to do a thing that is new to the southeast and to our region. And I think that both of us will have plenty of runway for in the future as many, many jobs are being created in, in our backyards. That facility also doubles as an economic development office building. So it's got a very diverse set of program associated with it. We are interviewing for a very large project with Georgia Tech next month that we've been shortlisted and competing with two other firms on. And of course, we stay on the lookout for opportunities in Clayton County to leverage our relationship and expertise, and we have pursued work together here in the county. As an architect, we have a lot of engineering partners, too. We do work on some, some larger projects, and those are typically connected with a larger MEP firm. So I'm, I'm talking about the scale of, you know, thousands of employees and satellite offices within our nation, but also international offices. And we had the thought and idea after a conversation with Kevin's group that we might, they might benefit also from knowing some of their, what could be perceived as competitors, but really took on the challenge to be sort of extended mentors and work with Kevin's group. And that's been really interesting to watch because there are projects that the three firms, my, my firm is the architect, but then a very, very large MEP firm and Kevin's growing MEP firm are all collaborating together. There are projects that they have continued working on together that do not involve me at all. So I'm really, I feel like a proud parent in some way and watching them grow and develop their business. And I hope that he continues to answer my phone calls when I need MEP engineering support. So Kevin is an excellent engineer. He's got a solid foundation running a business. He's also a great person and a person that I can now call friend. So we're very, very grateful for the county, Carol, Eddie and Tammy, their teammates, and the opportunity to have gained the knowledge throughout this process and developed a relationship with a consulting partner that will continue to be a partner of ours beyond the completion of this program. And so thank you for allowing us to participate.
Great, great. Appreciate you sharing that testimony.
Thank you.
So maybe your protege can go with you when you do the project at Georgia Tech?
Absolutely. He is a member of our team, and he will be interviewing with us. Yes, thank you so much.
Ms. Carol, anything else?
No, ma'am, no, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all. Appreciate the work that y'all are doing. Water Conservation Commission.
Do you have a slide? Very good, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner. I should say, and my name is Daniel Small, and I'm representing the Georgia Water and Soil and Conservation Commission and also the Clayton County Soil and Water Conservation District. And we want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to give you an informational brief on both of agencies and also the particular item that we wanted to provide you with additional clarification on that was on your agenda last week. To save time and to provide you with information that you may refer back to, we have prepared slides, and the first slide gives you an overview of the Clayton County Soil and Water Conservation District. And also it shows how the Clayton County Soil and Water Conservation District integrates into the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. And this afternoon, or I should say tonight now, the purpose of this information brief is to provide you with some information on the item that we reviewed on your agenda at the last meeting. It was regarding the MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, with the Clayton County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. It's an agreement, not a memorandum or understand or MOU. But we wanted to make sure that it was understood that the, and you can give me the next slide. Thank you. And you can give me the next one. There should have been another slide attached to that. You don't have that? Okay. The Memorandum of Agreement, I have hard copies for all of you to review. But, and the purpose of it is to implement the Georgia Soil Sedimentation Erosion Control Act when it comes to the relationship between the counties, municipalities, when it comes to soil and water conservation and also soil disturbance activities. If you look at the MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, it specifically lays out the agreement between the county and the district and the commission with respect to how sedimentation erosion control plans are reviewed and approved. So with that in mind, we want to make sure that you understand that the purpose of it is for you to sign the agreement. And the agreement will of course be forwarded back to the district and district to the commission. And it will serve as the implementing tool between the county and this particular case, Clayton County, rule. Because we have agreements already with all the other municipalities. And one of the requirements of this agreement is coordination and collaboration when it comes to reviewing and approving these plans. We're not taking away any responsibilities for you to approve plans, but it does require coordination and regular scheduled reporting of your activities. So that's what we wanted to do tonight, and we want to make sure that that was provided to you. So at this point, do you have any questions or do you need additional information?
Yeah, I would like for you to, you know, specifically let us know what it is that concerns you most. Because last week, I think there was a paragraph, and the wording in that paragraph was a grave concern to you.
I checked to see who put that particular resolution together. And in their description in the resolution, it specifically focused only on one aspect of the Memorandum of Agreement. It specifically focused on the county will have total responsibility for reviewing and certifying sedimentation erosion control plans without approval from the Soil and Water Conservation District. And that's clear, and it's stated within the MOA. But it left out 90% of the required coordination and collaboration that's required as part of the MOA. So when you read that MOA, you, I'm sorry, when you read the resolution, it gets the impression that the commission and the district are turning over those responsibilities without any type of entitlements in terms of review and coordination and providing support.
So do you have maybe something in writing from your group?
Yes.
That could clarify that and maybe give it to us or to, to our attorney?
Yes. In fact, we have provided the county with the official sedimentation, oh, sorry, official MOA. And I apologize the way it's set up there, it's broadsheet. But the MOA that I will be providing you with copies of lays out that type of coordination and collaboration that we will be doing. But we do not want you to go away with the impression that we have. But we do not want you to go away with the impression that we have removed ourselves from our support to your program in terms of the Sedimentation Erosion Control Act and sedimentation erosion control requirements.
So, just so that I'm clear as well, so the ask of us, first of all, I want to say thank you for paying attention and getting our attention to pull it from the agenda. That is commendable. And then, secondly, so we're clear on our next steps. So your recommendation is for the utilization of this MOA or to incorporate the changes as you just discussed in response to Commissioner Hambley?
To provide signatories on the MOA that has been furnished to you. And that MOA then will be provided to the district for its signatures. And then, in turn, it will be sent on to the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission for their approval.
Awesome.
Okay. Now, we have an MOA, in effect, for the county at this time. This particular MOA include the need for coordination and regular reporting.
Got it.
And that's so important. And on a regular basis, we review your program and also make recommendations in terms of whether or not your activities, land disturbing activities that you are reviewing and approving are meeting state requirements. And if they are not, then we also make recommendations on where there are deficiencies and from an engineering standpoint, from a soil and water conservation management best practices standpoint, then in turn, we provide that report to your particular department. And your particular department at this time is the Clayton County Department of Transportation.
Got it.
So that particular department is the one that will be furnishing us with those regular reports. But we are not taking away that responsibility. That responsibility still rests within Clayton County.
Is there a timeline? I was going to ask that question.
Is there a timeline? We have, we submitted this MOA approximately a year ago.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And we have been waiting for the county to respond. And talking to the representative for the commissioners here in the county, they explained that there have been several situations where information was not being complied, request was not being complied with, and as a result, it extended, okay?
For a whole year.
Yes. And at this point, we are ready, at this point, at your next meeting, if you can see, we'll sign that MOA and providing it back to us, then we in turn will sign and then turn forward it on to the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission for their signature. And of course, they have to be neutralized.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Can we, I mean, Mr. McTark, is there anything you'd like?
Mm-hmm, okay.
A couple, couple clarity items. As Mr. Small addressed, there is a current MOA. So the urgency is to authorize the new MOA that their Soil and Water Commission has requested that the county to do. I think the uncertainty came between the language of the MOA, which they provided to us, which was presented last week, and the language Attorney Reed put in the resolution, which as we know, doesn't regurgitate everything that's in the MOA. So I think that's where the concern came about. The resolution didn't speak to all the parts of the MOA, which most resolutions do not go into multi-page MOA language. So I think that's been clarified now and we're good to move forward with the MOA as originally presented by their organization to us without concerns moving forward.
Hold on one second, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So I have a question on that. So if there's a space of ambiguity, why would we not clarify that?
Well, I, I mean, I'll be happy to get with Attorney Reed to make sure the resolution specifies the finer points or the higher points, I should say, of the MOA, to make sure it addresses all the concerns of the requirements. But the MOA is, what he has here is what they provided to us.
Okay. The only reason I say that because it's not a problem until it's a problem, is what I'm mentioning.
It's not the MOA. I do believe that some emphasis has been placed on the resolution that you had on, in your agenda, that was not totally worded to reflect exactly what this particular instrument would serve.
I'm very clear. And that is important for it to be accurate. So thank you. And hopefully, Mr. Reed and his team will get that done underneath our current, you know, Operations Division.
And also, the descriptions that I've given you in that presentation will give you more information on the role of the Clayton County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission activities and support to Clayton County.
Okay. If I may ask, Mr. Chair, can we get that resolution at least sent over to the board prior and to the conservation representatives so that we don't run into what we ran into before? It is imperative that these things do coincide in a definitive manner.
I have extra copies here that I can provide.
That would be great, sir. And you can email me as well.
Any other questions? Thank you both for the presentation input. Mr. McTark, oh, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that's the last discussion item on the agenda. At this time, we stand adjourned. Thank you.